All right, good evening. I'd like to call the Zoning Board of Appeals for Tuesday, August 16th, 2022 to order. Will the city call the roll, please?
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Foe?
Here.
Mr. Friedman?
Here.
Mr. Rogers?
Here.
Ms. Libbit?
Here.
Mr. Havas?
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum to conduct business.
Uh, thank you. Are there any communications?
None.
To the next case. Uh, so will the city call the first case, please?
Yes, ma'am.
Zoning Board of Appeals, case number 22-21. The appellant Leslie Ashford owner is requesting the following waiver from the board: To erect a fence beyond the side of the house along a double frontage yard, zero permitted, forty point five feet proposed. The property is located on the southwest side of New Hampshire between Maryland and Hardin Circle at 15959 New Hampshire Street, Sidwell Parcel, 2425208001, Zoned R3, Single Family Residential. This appeal is to Sections 5.37-1, Article 4, Paragraph C1, and Subsection D, more commonly known as the zoning ordinance.
Great, thank you. Is the appellant here? If you could step to the microphone, please. Thank you. And if you could just state your name and address for the record, please.
Leslie L. Ashford at 15959 New Hampshire Street, Southfield, Michigan, 48075.
Perfect, thank you. Um, can you explain to us what you're asking for and why?
Okay. I would like to replace the current dilapidated chain link fence, and I would like to do that because I'd like to beautify that corner. And I also have a frisky burnadoodle who likes to escape through the fence, and I think that that would be something that would help secure the area for me and, you know, so I could kind of relax with that. But essentially, it is to replace a really homely old fence.
Okay.
And beautify that corner.
Sure, perfect. If you'll just stay there for us.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, will the city read the findings of fact, please?
The appellant Leslie Ashford owner is requesting the following waiver from the board: To erect a fence beyond the side of the house along a double frontage yard, zero permitted, forty point five feet proposed. The property is located on the southwest side of New Hampshire between Maryland and Hardin Circle at 15959 New Hampshire Street, Sidwell Parcel, 2425208001, Zoned R3, Single Family Residential. This appeal is to Section 5.37-1, Article 4, Paragraph C1, Subsection D, more commonly known as the zoning ordinance. The properties to the north, south, east, and west are Zoned R3, Single Family Residential, and are developed with single-family dwellings in the Kentfield Manor sub. Field inspections of the surrounding area reveal the properties to the north, south, east, and west are mostly one-story, single-family dwellings, and a few two-story dwellings mixed in. Exteriors are made of mostly brick and siding. Most of the homes in the area have detached garages. The surrounding corner lots are mostly legal, nonconforming, with fencing that comes beyond the side of the setback and lot coverage requirements for double-frontage lot. The subject property was built in 1956 and is 1,818 square feet, one-story, single-family residence on a crawl space with a 484-square-foot detached garage. The appellant proposes to erect a privacy fence beyond the setback for a double-frontage lot, zero permitted, forty point six, forty feet, six inches proposed.
Great, thank you. Uh, do you agree with those facts?
Yes.
Okay. Is there anything else you'd like to add at this time?
No.
Okay. Uh, will the city read the staff recommendation, please?
Yes, ma'am. Staff recommendation is for favorable consideration of the following waiver for a six-foot-high wood privacy fence, forty feet, six inches beyond the side of the house, with the following conditions: The fence along Maryland Street be placed a minimum of ten feet back from the sidewalk or angled to eliminate the visual impairment of the neighboring driveway to the south. The fence must comply with all other fence requirements. This recommendation is based upon the following: Due to the existing legal nonconforming fence, uh, and the strict application of the regulation would result in practical difficulties, uh, to the owner of this property, uh, the proposed fence with the proposed conditions is in keeping with the character of the surrounding area and would not have an adverse detrimental effect upon adjacent or surrounding properties.
Okay, thank you. Um, do you have anything else you want to add before we open public comment?
Well, I'd like to know what ten feet back. Is it ten feet from the street or ten feet from the sidewalk?
From the sidewalk. Or the, well, let me look at your site plan to make sure I got this right. Um, there was not, yeah, there is a sidewalk. Yeah, you're gonna have to be ten feet back from the sidewalk because of the fact that the neighbor to the south is driveway right there, and when they back out of their driveway, they're not gonna be able to see anybody coming down the sidewalk, once we make this an opaque fence, uh, this cedar fence that you're proposing. So we can either angle it, um, so they can see down the sidewalk fifteen feet, or we can move it back, the whole fence back ten feet.
Okay.
And that would, so that doesn't create a visual block for the-
Okay. So that would be a thirty feet out from, from what I'm looking at. Up there says that's forty point five feet.
Correct.
So instead of going out forty, we would be going out thirty?
Correct.
Okay. So I have the option of being an angle from the-
Well, if you go back fifteen feet from that corner, the southeast corner, you could angle it back towards there, so they can see when they back out of their garage or out of their driveway.
Okay.
Down the sidewalk, at least fifteen feet.
Okay. Okey-dokey. I can, I just don't want it to be strange looking.
Right. So you don't, and that decision doesn't have to be made tonight. Uh, you can do that when you get your fence permit.
Gotcha.
Okay? It gives you that flexibility.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
We can talk more about it, um, after we get done with the hearing.
Thanks.
Okay. Um, so let's, uh, open public comment. If there's anyone here who wishes to speak on this case, uh, now is your opportunity to step forward. And seeing none, we will close public comment and turn it over to the board. Um, Mr. Friedman?
I don't have any issues with it, obviously, with the condition, uh, you know, that either, either condition that, that saves the visibility of the neighbor's driveway.
Sounds good. Mr. Havas?
I don't have any issue with it either. I agree with the city.
All right, thank you. Uh, Mr. Rogers?
Uh, the only question I had is, the chain link fence ten feet away right now?
Say that again?
Is the chain link fence that's currently there ten feet away from the sidewalk?
It is, it is not, but it's not opaque.
Okay.
We can see through it and over it.
Okay.
Because it's only four feet high, and the, there were existing bushes there, but those have been removed for that reason, I believe.
Okay.
Is that correct?
Yes, and they did cause an obstruction.
Yeah.
The, the, the bushes did, so it would be same saying.
Mm-hmm.
The, it wouldn't be any different than what historically has been there for many years if the fence was replaced. And actually, I wanted to kind of bring it back a couple feet because I wanted landscaping to go deeper in that area, but, um, so I didn't think replacing it, since the, the family was used to not seeing anyway, because those bushes were there, but-
Right.
Uh, that's my only challenge as to, uh, I mean, I, I understand safely, I'm a former military person, safety first, but, um, if they were already driving well with an obstruction, I figured they could continue to do it.
We'll call that lucky.
Um, I have no problem with the, uh, you know, replacing the fence, and if it has to be ten feet for visual, you know, for the neighbor to back out properly, you know, that's, I'm going along with the, you know, the building department.
The recommendation.
But I have no problem with the fence being changed out to a new fence, six feet tall. I saw you already had the panels there. So, go ahead.
I have no problem either. The panels look beautiful, so.
All right, I agree. Um, so, uh, Mr. Rogers, want to make a motion for us?
Sure. Um, in regard to ZBA case 22-21, the appellant Leslie Ashford owner is requesting the following waiver from the board: To erect a fence beyond the side of the house along a double-frontage yard, zero permitted, four, forty point five feet proposed. Property is located on the southwest side of New Hampshire between Maryland and Hardin Circle at 15959 New Hampshire Street, Tax Parcel Number 2425208001, Zoned R3, Single Family Residential. Uh, I make a motion, um, to allow this waiver for a six-foot-high wood privacy fence to be installed. Um, the following conditions: The fence along Maryland Street has be placed a minimum of ten feet back from the sidewalk or angled to eliminate the visual impairment of the neighboring driveway to the south, and that the fence must comply with all other fence requirements. Um, I make this, uh, motion based upon the following: Due to the existing legal nonconforming fence and the strict application of the regulations, would result in practical difficulties to the owner of such a property, and the proposed fence with the proposed conditions is in keeping with the character of the surrounding area, it would not have an adverse or detrimental effect upon adjacent or surrounding properties.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, your request passes, so just continue to work with the building department on that permit.
Very much.
All right, thank you. Have a nice night.
You too.
Okay, will the city call the next case, please?
Yes, ma'am. Case number 22-20. The appellant Terry Crowde of the City of Southfield, and per the request of Southfield City Council, is requesting the following administrative review from the board: Interpretation/Clarification of ZBA Case Number 79-103, approved October 30th, 1979, and Number 78-45, approved June 20th, 1978, regarding a temporary sidewalk waiver, specifically if the sidewalk should now be installed as part of the recent approved development. The property is located on the west side of Franklin Road between Franklin Point Drive and Matrot Street at 28545 Franklin Road, Sidwell Parcel, 2418-277-059, Zoned RT, Attached Single Family, and RMM, Multiple Family, Medium Rise. This administrative review is in accordance with Sections 5.198, Article 23, Chapter 45, Southfield Code, City Code, more commonly known as the zoning ordinance.
Um, thank you. Is the appellant here?
Uh, it's, it's actually the City of Southfield, so, um, yeah, so I'm Sarah Malali from the Planning Department, and, um, I am, uh, we are acting as the appellant on behalf of, um, as directed by City Council. Um, so currently, based on Article 4, Section 5.31 of the zoning ordinance, uh, for all new development sidewalks, not, not less than five feet in width are, uh, shall be constructed one feet inside the right-of-way line of all abutting streets. So, um, due to some discussion that arose during the most recent site plan review, uh, for, for some development at this, uh, location, the city planner was directed by City Council, uh, to obtain an interpretation from the board based on some prior variances that the board, uh, had granted in the past. So, um, and more specifically as to if, if the prior approved, or prior, uh, waived sidewalk would now be, uh, should now be constructed as part of the current development.
Okay. Um, so who's gonna read the findings of fact?
That would be me.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Um, so for, uh, ZBA case 22-20, the appellant Terry Crowde of the City of Southfield, and per the request of the Southfield City Council, is requesting the following administrative review from the board: Interpretation and clarification of ZBA Cases 79-103, approved October 30th, 1979, and 78-45, approved June 20th, 1978, regarding a temporary sidewalk waiver, specifically if the sidewalk should now be installed as part of a recently approved development. The property is located on the west side of Franklin Road between Franklin Point Drive and Matrot Street at 28545 Franklin Road, Sidwell Parcel ID 2418-277-059, Zoned RT, Attached Single Family, and RMM, Multiple Family, Medium Rise. The subject property is currently developed with a Maple Tree Apartment Complex. Property to the north is Zoned RT, Attached Single Family, and RMM, Multiple Family, Medium Rise, and is developed with the Franklin Apartments. Properties to the south are Zoned RT, Attached Single Family Residential, and RM, Multiple Family Residential, Low Rise, and are developed with the Stone Brook Condominiums and the Fountains on Franklin Senior Apartment Complex, respectively. The properties to the east across Franklin Road are Zoned OS Office Service and B1 Neighborhood Business, and are developed with a multi-building office park fronting on Franklin Road and an office building fronting on Northwestern Highway, respectively. The properties to the west across Matrot Street are Zoned R1, Single Family Residential, and are developed with single-family homes within the Villas of Pebble Creek and Tyler Estates Cluster Option Developments. The total site contains 16.31 acres of land with approximately 547 feet of frontage on Franklin Road, approximately 223 feet of frontage on Matrot Street, a depth of approximately 1,116.64 feet off Franklin Road, and a depth of approximately 546.55 feet off Matrot Street. The approved site plan reflects the construction of four two-story residential townhome units in one building with associated parking. And as mentioned before, due to the discussion that arose during the process, council had directed the city planner to, um, obtain an interpretation from the board, um, specifically related to, uh, first, Zoning Board of Appeals Case 78-45, dated June 20th, 1978, which granted various building and carport setback variances, permission to locate parking within the RT, Attached Single Family Zone, and a waiver of density requirements, with a condition that the appellant would be required, quote, "to participate in any improvements of Matrot Avenue." And then, second, Zoning Board of Appeals Case 79-103, dated October 30th, 1979, granted a temporary waiver of 858 lineal feet of public sidewalk along Matrot, uh, with a condition that the appellant post a bond or other suitable instrument with the city to ensure the construction of the sidewalk at a time when the city feels it is required. At that time, Matrot was a gravel road with very few houses. Since the initial 1979 Zoning Board of Appeals case was granted, several residential properties along the west side of Matrot have been developed. A total of 89 units have been constructed within the Tyler II subdivision, uh, Tyler IV, and Villas of Pebble Creek between 1989 and 2020. Uh, Matrot Street was a gravel road until 2016, at which time it was paved. Right-of-way sidewalks were, were required and installed on the west side of Matrot as part of the Tyler II and Tyler IV residential developments, which were installed circa 2002 and 2017, respectively. And, uh, Planning Department cannot find evidence of a bond placed by the former appellant. However, a covenant dated August 8th, 1980, was executed by the prior appellant, stating they would build the sidewalk per aneezment, which was recorded with Oakland County and dated, uh, January 3rd, 1979, and also executed by the former appellant. Uh, neither the covenant nor the easement indicated any conveyance of the documents to future successors or heirs of the property. However, as you know, Zoning Board of Appeals variances and waivers granted run with the land.
Okay, thank you. Um, so I would say this is, um, unusual for us to, um, uh, make this type of interpretation, so there's not really an order by which we run this, this case. So, seeing as we have, um, uh, someone with, uh, some documents and presentation, I'm gonna open the floor, uh, for you to state your name and address for the record, please, and, and what you're here to share with us.
Sure. Roger Shear, Maple Tree Apartments LLC, 31300 Orchard Lake Road, Farmington Hills, Michigan. Again, um, I'm responding to, uh, I guess, a request for additional information as you interpret the requirements of the, uh, previously granted variance. When we purchased the property back in 2013, um, we knew nothing about the variance. Obviously, we had attorneys involved in reviewing all the documentation. The property was actually purchased out of bankruptcy, out of foreclosure, um, uh, at that time. So it was in a state of, uh, somewhat decay in, in, in various buildings and, and, uh, and, uh, we thought we could make the, the community a much better community, so, which we've been doing. Um, at that time, of course, we knew nothing of the variance. Uh, I assume it was recorded, uh, if that's what I'm hearing tonight. Uh, as, uh, Ms. Malali states, a variance may run with the land, but that too is a term of art. Um, running with the land, that does not mean variances don't expire. In this case, I understand there was a bond that was, um, posted for enforcement of installation of this sidewalk, when the city decided there was a need. Um, I don't know that the city knows if those bond proceeds are, continue to be held or not. Um, I don't think it's the objective of the city to go every, to every owner in the chain of title and say, "Well, we lost the proceeds. We need you to refund this bond." That would make no sense. Um, and I don't suggest that they're doing that here, but I'm posing a theoretical possibility of what their, that, that this can lead to. In any case, assuming the variance exists, and it runs with the land, and it didn't expire when the bond expired, whether or not the bond proceeds were drawn upon, we, we never heard about it till, uh, we sought approval for our new four-unit building to replace an old house on the property. This, again, is a, a aerial view of the Maple Tree Apartment Site. I'll pop loud because I'm not doing the background noise, the speaker or the microphone.
Um, we actually need you to stay on the microphone because the meeting's recorded, so, I'm sorry. Yeah, if you want to bring that closer, maybe to you or to us?
I'll do that. So, on this lower right section is a new, we purchased several houses, uh, older houses and largely rental houses in a state of decay. The properties were not graded. Um, there was, uh, debris on, on the outside, and there was no sidewalk along Franklin Road. Purchasing these houses, we thought we could have a great window into the community. We subsequently sought approval and received approval under RT zoning. Uh, we had to rezone the property, went before Planning Commission and Council, obtained RT zoning, approval for 26 new units. It's under construction. We hope to have it done this year. Never heard anything about a variance or a sidewalk along Matrot. We installed a dog park here. We sought approval, a permit for the dog park. Never heard about a variance. We needed permits. We've re-roofed every building. Never heard about a perm, uh, a variance for a sidewalk. We've installed new windows in every building. Um, again, the cost of all of these things has been very expensive. We've done a lot of paving, uh, improved carports. Never heard in any of the permitted activities about a variance. Now, we're seeking approval for a new four-unit building in the very back. For some reason, when this site was developed, there were three houses on it, uh, that were kept in place. One of the houses is, we've restored two of them. One of the houses is in a particularly bad state of decay. Unfortunately, the resident, um, uh, was unable to, well, it, the, the unit became, the house became vacant. So we thought, we're building these townhomes that conform, uh, and harmonize so beautifully within the community, let's build the same townhome, four-unit townhome in the back. So we went in front of Planning and Council, received approval for the site plan in both cases. No mention in the Planning Commission of any variance, went before Council, and the only reason we're even discussing a variance is because Mr. Crowde brought this up, and I'm not even sure why, because we have a community that has a perimeter fence around it, or masonry wall in parts. So, particularly in the back along Matrot, we, none of our residents would want us to breach the fence or the wall to cross over to get onto any sidewalk along Matrot.
If, if I might, if I could please just stop Mr. Shear for just one moment, if I could, to the chair, I just want to remind the board, this is not, we're not discussing any, any variance at this time for the sidewalk or not. We're, we're, the interpretation request is, is solely for the two prior, uh, cases that were granted by the Zoning Board of Appeals, and if, if the, if these cases still hold, and if a variance, um, I'm sorry, and if, if a sidewalk either needs to be or doesn't need to be installed, and if the board determines that these prior cases reflect that a sidewalk does need to be installed now, then Mr. Shear would have to reapply for an actual variance or a waiver of that sidewalk. So this is, this is solely to discuss the prior ZBA cases that were granted, and it basically what, what that means.
Yeah. I mean, I understand, but I think it is helpful to kind of understand the full picture because this is coming to us from a very unusual-
Yep.
-situation. So-
I just wanted to remind the board of that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the piece of information.
And if I can continue, the, um, um, if the variance exists, there's no reason for me to come, I think the suggestion is I need to come back to request a variance. If the variance exists, it exists. I don't need to come back to ask for something that already exists. I'm simply showing that if it exists, let it continue, because there's no need for it. With all of the permitted activity that's been done here, no mention of a variance, no mention of the need for a sidewalk. The sidewalk that really mattered is the one along Franklin, where we have a senior community and people walking on Franklin Road itself. Now have a beautiful sidewalk with our art contribution of a beautiful plaza in front. The sidewalk on Matrot was never mentioned. If the variance exists, there's no detriment to the residents in this area of not having that sidewalk installed at this time. Again, it wasn't brought up at the Planning Commission, it wasn't brought up at Council. In fact, Council objected to the notion that we would breach our fence to install a sidewalk. Then I received an email from Mr. Crowde suggesting there may not need, be a need to put the sidewalk on the west, I mean, on the east side of our street, be, and I think that the reason for that is you can't build it anymore. The, there is a drainage basin along the east side of Matrot. You can't just put, build over it, you can't just, you'd have to install, you'd have to engineer a, an in-ground system to, and then back to the-
If I might, again, I, 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 I'm sorry, to the chair, this-
I think I have the floor.
We're getting into, into the, the matter for the interpretation that's here before, before the board, is to look at the two prior cases and the conditions that were granted or stipulated as part of those prior granted variances. And, and again, as I had stated, there was, uh, there were two cases. The first case basically stipulated that, um, the appellant at the time would be required to participate in any improvements on Matrot, and the second granted a temporary waiver, a temporary waiver of the public sidewalk along Matrot, um, with the condition the appellant posted a bond, which we have no record of, and that, um, the construction of the sidewalk would be constructed when the city feels it is required. So that, those are the matters that I would like to just ask the board to consider at this time, based on those two prior cases and the minutes that we've provided, whether or not those cases state that, yes, this is the time when a sidewalk should be installed, or no, it's, it's not. And again, if the board decides or gives the interpretation that, yes, this is the time when the sidewalk needs to be installed, then Mr. Shear would have the time to come back. He would have to, he would have to apply for the variance of the sidewalk, come back before you, and he could make all his specific cases on why or why, why sidewalk should not be.
Okay. Well, let's turn it over to the board and have a discussion.
Can I?
Who wants- Who wants, we're going to turn it over to the board, stay right there, we might have questions for you.
Okay.
Thank you. Anybody want to go first?
I, I have some questions.
Yes, please.
Couple of things, first of all, you mentioned that the, that the covenant was recorded. The copy that we have is, is not a recorded copy. Was it recorded?
Yes, it was. We, the, the librarian page number that I, I did confirm, go to the Oakland County records, if you enter in that librarian page number, it is recorded with the county.
The librarian page number in the document?
Yes. That means that it's recorded.
That, that, that's talking about the librarian page of the easement.
Oh, I'm sorry, of the covenant. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, no, that, the, the covenant does not appear to be recorded. The easement, you're right, yes. The easement was recorded, the covenant does not appear to have been recorded.
If I'm not mistaken, when you said covenants don't run with the land, I believe that's only when they're not unrecorded. If they would have been recorded, I believe the covenant would have run with the land.
We're, we're talking about whether the ZBA variances run with the land or not.
Right, you said the ZBA variance runs with the land and covenants do not. But I believe they, this covenant does not because it wasn't recorded, but covenants generally would run with the land if they were recorded.
Right, I don't think I mentioned whether or not that would run with the land. I, I was just speaking about the variances.
And I would assume the current owner would have then had notice of the covenant. And I would assume if it was not recorded that he had no notice of the covenant. I mean, you know, I, as I, I understand it, that the waiver that was granted originally gave the previous owner a waiver of the sidewalk with, with the restriction that he satisfied the city of Southfield with some documented bond or other thing that said it satisfied the city of Southfield. And then he has that waiver, it didn't have a time limit on it. And he apparently gave that covenant and must have satisfied it. Yeah, but I'm saying it's not recorded, this is, that's just the sort of notary.
Notary stamp.
Yeah. So, I mean, if, if, he had to satisfy the city, and that was the only limitation, and he apparently never posted a bond, but did give them that covenant, which if they had recorded would bind the future owners of the land to create that sidewalk whenever the city of Southfield wanted. What, it, what appears is that the city of Southfield did not record that covenant, and therefore it does not run with the land. And I don't see that, that anything about the original, you know, that, he had to satisfy, he gave them a covenant, which if they were accorded would bind the current owner.
If, if I might through the chair, through Mr. Friedman, I think the big question is, is because of the condition that stated that the construction of the sidewalk should be, should happen when the city feels it is required. So I, I think that that's the biggest question.
That's in the covenant.
Who is making the determination and what would, what would influence that determination?
I, I have a, well, I have, I have another question. What is the, you know, I don't know if the board, I haven't been on this board that long, what is the legal standing of our determination of our waiver? If he's required to build a sidewalk, you can make him build a sidewalk. You could sue him and ask for him to build a sidewalk if he's required to, if he's, and, and, you know, you'll have that lawsuit and somebody will win. What is our determination of our waiver factor in?
Again, through the chair to Mr. Friedman, so if, if it is determined that the sidewalk should be constructed at this time, or that these variances basically state that the intent was for the construction of the sidewalk to happen at this time or any time in the past, and it hasn't been, then again, Mr. Scher would have the opportunity to reapply to the board for a variance of that sidewalk. We're just asking if the board feels, based on this information that we're providing, does this information contain within these cases state that a sidewalk should be constructed now, based on those conditions and based on the minutes and based on the information that you have? And if, if you say no, then his approved plans stand. If you say yes, he still has the opportunity to apply to the ZBA for a variance of the sidewalk. And he can make his case further, and that's why I have kind of just been stopping because this, it should really be limited to the information that, that you have before you now.
I'll say that, you know, my opinion is that, that the board certainly intended to require the previous owner to build a sidewalk when the city wanted to. But the condition that they put in the waiver was that they satisfy the, the city of Southfield with, with some covenant or bond, which they did, but turned out not to require them. It doesn't have a time limit, and so I, I would think the waiver still stands. That would be my, my opinion.
I mean.
Unless, of course, that it turns out that the covenant was recorded and in his purchase he, he, he missed it, or, or if it does exist and has was recorded, then I, you know, I would think he'd be required, not by our determination, but be required to fulfill the covenant.
Yeah, I mean, I feel like we're being asked to make a decision almost like on a variance that has already been decided. So I, I guess I partially agree. I thought, when, before I went to the property, that it was asking, like, that there was not going to be a sidewalk built on Franklin. That's the important sidewalk that connects sidewalks that we're not connecting, in my opinion. Mat, Matrot, I'm, I, I guess I would, I understand that it was just recently paved. It seems like as part of that paving project sidewalk should have been installed. But, yeah, I, that, I guess I'm in a similar mindset to Mr. Friedman. So, Mr. Rogers, your thoughts?
The owners, the owners that agreed to this, this variance and putting up the bond, were they the ones that sold you the property? Has it been changed ownership since then to you? Was there somebody in between? The reason why I'm asking is because, I mean, somebody owns the property, you said you bought it in 2016, this case is from 78, 79, you're talking how many years?
Well, and he said he bought it out of foreclosure.
Bought it out of foreclosure, okay. This is a, I mean, this happens all the time when you apply for building permits to build a new home, for instance, and you think you've got all of your costs all figured out, and you go and you apply for your building permit, and they come back to you and they say, "Oh, well, you have a sewer tap fee that's $12,000, you thought it was $1,000." Or you have this, you know, so there are, there's always costs that go into the construction that you don't know about. As far as this case is concerned, I don't understand the requirement for the sidewalk behind that fence. I don't get it. There's a sidewalk, there's sidewalks that have been built on the other side with, with, that look beautiful and are serviceable, this is a dead-end street. I don't understand what the purpose of that sidewalk is. I'd go back, all the way back to, to the, the 78 case that says that when the time comes, they will contribute to something, some type of improvement. Well, I know we're not voting on whether to require the sidewalk or not, but my opinion would be, forget the sidewalk, you know, donating something to the improvement of the city or whatever it is, if it's a tree bond or, you know, adding to that, there's got to be something, I understand the cost, thousand, almost a thousand feet of sidewalk today is a very, it's, it's an expensive endeavor. It's not like these, in 78, when they were asked to do that, they could have put 900 feet of sidewalk in for, for pennies on the dollar. Concrete today costs $150 to $175 a yard. And that doesn't mean that you're, you get off the hook just because things cost more money, you don't have to do it. But I'm looking at the practicality of the sidewalk, it doesn't make any sense to me. So the first question I have is, who is, whose requirements, obviously the, the ordinance is requiring it, and who's interpreting it? Mr. Crowe is interpreting it right now because you want to do more work on your property. I think you're being penalized for being a good owner, that's what I, what I see is going on here. Because if it was obvious to me when I, when I walked down Matrot and I saw that the need for a sidewalk there, I would get, I'd say, "What is this owner talking about? Of course you need it, put it in, don't argue with the city." But this is one of those cases I'm looking at, like, there's a reason why no one, no one came and brought this variance up all these years, because you don't need it, that's why.
If I might, I, I apologize to, I, I just, I wanted to state again, we've been discussing, Terry has been discussing maybe possibly alternatives for constructing it, but again, the, the ordinance states that a sidewalk is required. And we've had other variances that have come before you and have been granted based on similar, similar situations, but possibly with a condition of, you know, putting some money into some other pathway projects in the city, or, you know, maybe looking at the other side of the street and extending the sidewalk there. I mean, there are other options, but again, that would be part of his variance that came back if, if that was warranted. The, the biggest portion, and I just wanted to remind you, the board in the second case here granted a temporary waiver of the appeal. And usually, when you grant a temporary waiver for, you know, in, in parking matters and things like that, it's typically, in temporary uses, it's typically a one-year approval. Now, this doesn't specifically state one year, but that's how we usually, now, now, a temporary variance or a temporary waiver is usually a one-year, if you think of like the temporary uses, like I said, or temporary parking modifications. And again, I think it's more that the, the conditions are the things that are, are kind of the most, you know, telling, I guess. Just because, so this was, yes, a temporary sidewalk, a temporary waiver of the sidewalk was granted, but as a condition, they required the appellant post, post a, you know, suitable instrument, which, you know, the covenant was, was submitted, we can't find any sort of bond, but that will ensure the construction of the sidewalk at a time when the city feels it is required. And they, at that time, the board, one of the main reasons why they agreed to this is because they did not feel that it specifically says, based on the finding that the prevailing development in the area does not warrant a sidewalk. Remember, this was, if you look at the aerial photographs, there was, there were very few houses on the west side. It was a dirt road, there was nothing to connect it to. But now, again, we've got sidewalks, it's been paved, we've got, you can look at the, you know, you can see the development pattern there. So that, I think that is one of the key issues that, that, you know, Terry had, had pointed out, was that, based on that finding, that the area at that time did not warrant a sidewalk. So that was another question for the board, do you now feel that, is it now warranting a sidewalk? And how does that affect those prior cases?
It just doesn't seem like it's our decision to decide whether it's time for a sidewalk. That doesn't seem like inside our authority, in my opinion. So, Ms. Libbit, your thoughts?
Yes, I'm, I'm review, there are a couple of things that I'm reviewing here that are in the minutes. Granted, they're not recorded, but I'm not sure where these minutes came from. But it talks several times about participating in any improvement of Matrot Avenue, and that such agreement be acceptable to the city attorney. That's one place. There's another place that talks about the same thing. As a condition of this grant, the appellant will be required to participate in any improvement. So I don't know if that was what Mr. Rogers might have been getting at when he was talking about making some kind of donation or improvement. The other thing is, and this may not go to what we're supposed to be discussing, where did this covenant, where, where was this covenant found that we have in here if it wasn't recorded? Where was that found? Was it found at Oakland County?
If I might, through the chair to Ms. Libbit, this, it would, it was in our files, in our site plan files, when the development, with the site, with the approved site plans for the development that occurred at that time. So, most likely, like I said, you know, they, they had submitted that as, as the instrument that could hold them to it at a later, at a later time, but then, you know, the, the property was, was sold.
It wasn't made public. The reason I was asking is because usually when foreclosed property is bought, there's, there's title work that is done, and so those, those things that are, are recorded are, are seen, and then the title can be quieted. And so there's a hint here with this easement that was recorded, that something might have been going on, even though that easement was only a dollar. So this is, it's an interesting thing for the zoning board, I think, to, to be trying to decide from what people thought in 1979 and 1978, but things have changed. And so there could be, rather than this sidewalk, which seems to be the issue, there could be something else that could be done to improve that street.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Havens?
I mean, I think it was their intention that the sidewalk would eventually be built with, you know, because they said the temporary waiver, but I think where the main condition is when the city feels required, but that hasn't happened yet. I don't see, in my opinion, that it would still be in place, but then who decides that?
So it seems we're being asked.
Yeah.
If it's time to build a sidewalk.
Mm-hmm.
Not, not sure that's, certainly has never happened in my time on the board.
Right. Why can't we just agree that the variance that was given then, which was for the temporary stay of not having to do it, is still going on? It, we, it's still good? And that the owner can work with the building department on the, you know, on alternative ways to, to, you know, to handle the, the condition and, you know, do something more practical, you know? Here we are, we're, we're, we're finally at the point now where they're thinking, okay, the city's thinking, now's the time to put the walkway in, because if we don't put it in now, you know, now we have this whole street without a sidewalk on the one side, and there's going to be more development, more houses, whatever. So maybe, you know, I, I've already stated that I don't think that the sidewalk on that side of the street is necessary, but I do think that this, this agreement that they made in the zoning board should be, should stand up to some degree. That's, that's without saying. You know, I just think that the, that owner got away with, at that time, I understand, not got away with it, but it wasn't an appropriate time to put a sidewalk on a, on a gravel street, it makes no sense. Then I'm looking at the, you know, all the logistics today, and I'm, I'm coming up with the same thing, and it's paved, you know? So, but I still don't think that the, the, I, I think that the property owner, I think it should continue all the way through, is still having to put some type of, you know, something into the city's beautification of that street somehow, some way. I don't know how to quantify it because, like I said.
Well, and I think, Mr. Rogers, if we say that these variances stand, then it's liter, it states in the variance that the agreement has to be acceptable to the city attorney. So they need to, the owner needs to negotiate with the city attorney.
Well, it only says that he needed to file a document that would be determined by the city attorney.
This one, such agreement be acceptable to the city attorney.
Yeah.
A couple places it says that.
Remember, we're working with two different.
Stipulation that the improvements on Matrot be approved by the city attorney.
Those are the improvements, but in the sidewalk, it's in the second one, that, in the, in the second waiver that they granted, and it says it, it, they grant a temporary waiver, finding that the prevailing development in the area does not warrant a sidewalk, and as a condition, the board requires that the appellate posts with the city a bond or suitable instrument which will ensure the construction of the sidewalk at the time when the city feels it is required. The nature then, instrument is determined by the city attorney's office. We're not talking about improvements, are we? We're talking about a sidewalk.
If I might, through the chair to Mr. Friedman, well, I mean, that would technically be an improvement along Matrot, but.
I understand.
Yeah, I mean, that, it's not the pavement, obviously, but.
Again, we, we granted a waiver which runs with the land. The condition was that they file a document with the city attorney. They did. You want, the, the, because it was never recorded, it doesn't bind the new owner, you want us to reinterpret the waiver, the original waiver, to say that it didn't have that condition? That was a condition, they fulfilled the requirement. It unfortunately doesn't bind the new owner. I, I don't, I don't, I don't, we, it was temporary, it was. It was intended to, to have a condition that they, they, they fulfill some requirement that would legally bind them to create the sidewalk, which they did and would have bound future owners if it was recorded. The city attorney didn't record the document. He wants us to reinterpret the way to, 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 that it didn't stand. Granted him a waiver, it's temporary, it didn't contemplate only one year. He clearly contemplated it'd be longer than one year. So I, I, I don't know, I, I, as other people said, I don't know what we're expected to do.
So do we want to, I don't even know if it's a motion, but a, a motion that our interpretation is that the current variances stand and they do not bind the current owner? Or what do you want to say?
I just think, I don't want to make a legal interpretation about whether that covenant binds a future owner. I don't, it's just my conjecture.
Yeah, no, I mean, I think that's accurate. I mean, though we are a non-recording state, but if it's never disclosed because it went through foreclosure, you know, there's no way to uncover it.
I, I just looked up the statute on covenants. It appears that covenants can run with the land if they're recorded.
If they're recorded.
But I, again, I just think we granted a waiver. It had a condition, the condition was fulfilled. The question of whether it binds the new owner is what they're asking us to determine it. I don't know.
Well, yeah, they're asking us, should the sidewalk now be installed? My, my opinion is, is based on all this conversation is no, but.
The, the city, the city didn't follow up on this case.
Right.
And this is the, and we have cases with signage. Oh, no balloons, banners, blah, blah, blah. And they go, probably, we'll take them down, you know, when we put up the new signs. Well, there's not a police force that goes around town, you know, with, hey, take your banners down. Same thing with this. They gave us, they gave a variance in the late seventies, and they didn't police it. They don't have time to police it, but they probably should have because it was something of a very temporary nature. And they also knew that there was going to be a development of some sort down the road, you know, where this was going to become an issue. So i- if the land was in foreclosure that you bought it out of, that means the city was waiting for someone to buy it, and then they can, you know, hey, remember this covenant?
They could have probably recorded that covenant anytime up until the present owner bought it. I mean, that's what.
They, the city, you mean?
Yeah.
And the fact that they.
That's what happened here. The city, the city apparently did not record the covenant. It would have bound.
Right, they didn't do, that's what I'm saying. They didn't follow up with this case. And as a result, we're sitting here today trying to interpret it. So my interpretation is, you know, just like you said, I mean, it's, it's, it's hard to bind the, the owner in 2022 when this actually probably should have been activated many years ago or recording the covenant or whatever.
But let's think outside the box. Let's think outside the box a little bit because I'm still back on, yeah, the sidewalk was what was said, that's there. But then there's also discussion about, or whatever the office of the, the attorney agrees on. And beautification of neighborhoods is certainly a positive for any community. So it may not be a sidewalk. It might be something else.
It does say the word "any improvement," doesn't specify, I mean, sidewalk is an improvement, but it says "any improvements to Matrot." Well, we'll be required to participate in any improvement, so that could, so that opened, that opens a door for a discussion of today. Today in 2022, the ordinance says we need sidewalks, but it doesn't seem like practical to require it. But we have, we have to get this owner to make good on this somehow, some way. I think that there is a meeting point here without requiring the sidewalk. They're all in on, on their ownership and beautifying that area specific. You know, the sidewalk says like, it's far less than what they're doing. So I can't imagine they could work out something to appease the both parties and move on.
And again.
But the variance should stand.
Again, I just wanted to state again, if, if it is determined that this is the time when a sidewalk would be needed, he still would have the option to come back. And we may possibly, you know, we may, as the planning department, be in support of that variance due to, you know, maybe some other suggestions or, or things that the developer may often, offer. But at this point, it's just, you know, again, it's counsel asking the question, based on these variances, is it now warranted? Based on the conditions and the, and the findings from these ZBA cases?
You're, you're not asking if it's warranted, you're asking if it's required.
We know it's required, it is required. It's a requirement in the ordinance.
But he has a waiver.
But based on the finding that the prevailing development in the area at that time did not warrant a sidewalk. And that whatever was provided after the fact would ensure the construction of a sidewalk at the time the city feels it is required. So that's, I think that's.
Are you asking us to be the city and determine that it's required? Is that, is that what you're asking?
Yes, that is, yes.
I don't think that we're, I don't think that we're the city.
So either.
Based on the prior ZBA cases. It's an administrative review based on the prior cases that were, that were, that were granted.
Which say it's the city's determination, not the ZBA's determination of when it's time.
Yeah, but there are variance requests. So that's why, that's why counsel had requested the administrative review come back to the ZBA because there were ZBA cases that stipulated.
Listen, you have an unusual case of where you're being asked to do something that you normally wouldn't do.
I don't think it's our role to do either.
Probably not, but we're here.
So? I, I, I mean, I don't know, do we need to?
Is there, is there, is there, what's, what's the outcome that you desire from us? A, a motion that says what?
Basically stating that, based on the conditions and the findings that are in here, yes, a sidewalk is needed now because of, of the development of the area is now warranting, or no, we don't feel that that is the case. Looking at the conditions and the findings that were, that, that the sidewalk waiver was granted upon, are they still, are they still valid? Are they still in effect? Are they, are, is it, is this still something that the board feels would hold these cases to, to the, the variance that was granted?
You want to make a motion?
No.
No?
I, I don't think we're the city, it is, you know, if you, I believe he has a waiver.
I think you make a motion that we believe our ordinance is stand and we don't think the sidewalk should be done.
I'll make that one.
Yeah.
I move that the, the, the variance granted October 30th, 1979, to allowing the, the temporary waiver of the sidewalk requirement is still in effect.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
All right, so that is our interpretation. And that, and that ends our public hearing. So we now move on to minutes from June, we have June 7th and July 19th. Anybody see any changes or corrections on the June 7th minutes?
I did not.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve the June 7th minutes?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, how about the July 19th minutes? Any changes or corrections on those?
They were good too.
Okay, hearing done. Can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, second?
Second.
Thank you, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay, and then looks like our next meeting is September 13th, and we currently have three cases. Does anybody want to speak to anything about those cases? Okay. Any, and also, I, I think everybody was on the email chain, but I will not be here for that meeting. So I don't know if Mr. Friedman's gonna chair it.
I got a script.
All right, good. And so that takes us to miscellaneous. Does anybody have any miscellaneous? All right, then can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye? All right, meeting adjourned.